Good evening, everybody. This is the regularly scheduled meeting of the South Haven City Council. It's Tuesday, September the 6th, 2022, and I'd like to call this meeting to order. Our invocation this evening is going to be given by Bishop Dorothy Sherrod of Lilly of the Valley Church. And good evening, Bishop. Thank you for being here.
Good evening. Thank you for having me. Grace as Father in Heaven, we come this evening to give you thanks, to acknowledge you as being our Lord and Savior, to thank you for this another day that you blessed us to be able to come to this city council meeting, that we will be able to, as citizens of this community, to join in harmony with our city government. We pray, God, that you will give us wisdom, knowledge, and understanding, that you will lead and guide us into the ways that you would have us to go. Father God, we pray for strategy, that we will be able to come together on a united front, to be able to come and to have discord among each other, to be able to talk, to be able to understand and to respect each other. Father God, we all have different views, we might have different opinions, but that doesn't mean that we can't sit down as men and women and be able to agree to disagree and to do it respectfully. So we pray that you will guide us through this meeting, that you will continue to bless the city council and all of our government officials. Father God, we're so grateful that you have blessed our city this year. You've brought us thus far through the summer. We've had some tragedies, we've had some heartaches, we've had some drownings. And Lord, we know that it's only because of you, it's only because of your grace and mercy, that you spared us from disasters, that you spared us from hurt, harm, and dangers, Father God, and we're so grateful and we're so thankful. And we ask that you will continue to bless the city, that you will continue to bless the citizens of this city as we go forward, as we move forward in the direction that you would have us to go, that you will continue to bless, keep us safe, cover us, and camp your angels around us. We pray for the families of the drowning victims that were lost this summer. And Father God, we especially pray for those men and women of our city that risked their lives to save others. We pray that you will be with them, because when you rescue a child, we don't know, they have to go home to their families, but we ask you to strengthen and encourage them and keep them, keep our city safe, continue to bless us as we come together. These blessings we ask in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Bishop. And now if you're able to join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. All right, roll call, Megan.
Jeff Arnold.
Wendy Onuki.
Here.
Joe Reiser.
Here.
Steve Schlock.
Here.
George Sleeper.
Here.
Letitia Wilkins.
Here.
Scott Smith.
Here.
I can get a motion?
Make a motion to excuse Councilmember Arnold.
Second.
Motion and second to excuse Councilmember Arnold. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
He is excused. That takes us to the approval of the agenda.
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
All right, we got a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I'd like to have Section C pulled and discussed further.
That'll come up next. How's that sound? Are you talking about the consent agenda?
Park Avenue.
Hmm?
Six and C under six.
Yeah, so that'll come up next. Right now, we're just looking for the agenda. We can pull that out separately, an item six, we get there. So, hearing now on this particular item, motion and second to approve the agenda.
I make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
All right, motion and second to approve the agenda. No other discussion. All in favor, say aye.
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 Pose no. It's approved. So now consent agenda, items A through D. So, you want to make a motion to approve the agenda, but pull item C.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to pull item C and have further discussion.
Okay. So, can I get a second on that one?
Second.
So, we'll roll call items A, B, and D first, and then we'll talk about that at the second.
Onuki.
Yes.
Reiser.
Yes.
Schlock.
Yes.
Sleeper.
Yes.
Wilkins.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes. So, item C, Kate, you want to comment on it? Who gets?
Sure, and I'll ask Bill Hunter to come on up. So, we are decertifying portions of Park Avenue, which is not actually a road, and we have not been treating it as a road, but we've received funding from the state, I think, under Act 51 funds, and they have required us to decertify that road because it has been unfairly entered in their calculations as to how much Act 51 dollars we do get.
So I can ask you a question?
Sure.
Yeah. So, does that mean that a resident or someone can own it, or does the city own it and will not sell that property?
It's still city property.
It's still city property. It is still a right-of-way. What we can't do is, we've been receiving Act 51 money, which can only be for road surfaces. This is right-of-way, we were actually receiving Act 51 money. So to answer your question, no, because any kind of purchase of city property would have to go through city council. This is just decertifying it on the Act 51 map.
Okay, thank you. Good. All right, then we will, I need a motion to approve that item.
I make a motion to approve item C from the consent agenda.
Second.
We've got a motion, we've got a second. This will be a roll call.
Reiser.
Yes.
Schlock.
Yes.
Sleeper.
Yes.
Wilkins.
Yes.
Onuki.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes. The next item, trying to decide if we want the introduction or if we want to have discussion first. So, I'll read it and then we'll talk about it. City Council be asked to introduce a package of ordinance amendments addressing the operation and licensing of food trucks in the city of South Haven. Preference of this group, do you want to introduce it, or you want to discuss it before it's introduced? Because you're looking for guidance tonight, I know, so I've got a variety of concerns, but I can, however, this group would like to take it. I can.
I would be willing to table it to the next meeting, because I just received an email correspondence that I haven't even had a chance to read all the way through yet, and I don't see anybody from the restaurants here to speak to it. I would be in favor of table it if the group is.
To the next meeting? Get some restaurant tours?
Just to the next meeting. I mean, I just, I don't feel like I'm informed like I should be with all.
Is there a second to that? Do you want to sit on it for two weeks?
I can second that.
All right, motion and second to table it. So why don't we have a discussion on that? So I am, I know the restaurant tours just got done with the holiday weekend, and they're not here, so I would like to hear from them. So I'm concerned. We have one message from Jay, so I would be in favor of waiting. I think we owe it to them, so.
I guess it would be maybe good to at least get some comments on it, in case there's something, a fatal flaw or something like that, that needs to go back to Planning Commission. It'd be good to know that now. Right now, I don't see anything in there.
Okay. Anybody else? And if not?
I'm fine either way.
Okay.
Yeah, one of the issues that I have is that, how will the, in here it says the food trucks will not be limited by the permits. So, we don't know how many there's going to be, and the concern I have always had is, I love food trucks, but I don't think we should do it in a way that would impede the business of the restaurants that have money invested in equipment, storefronts, rent, et cetera. So we have to protect that. At the same time, we want to make food accessible throughout the city, and there are spots where there is very little. And then I don't want to stop people from being entrepreneurs, especially our own citizens. But that issue of the number of them is really a key component, and I don't think we've got enough information in this. I was trying to read this, sorry I didn't stand up at the Pledge of Allegiance initially, because I'm still sitting there trying to read this.
I just did, yeah.
And I want to know what the restaurants think, and from what I've read in between us talking, it sounds like they have real concerns about it, and I don't want to do anything to upset the free enterprise we already have in our town.
I have a question on that. I wanted to know, didn't we always have food trucks, even before the pandemic?
They've been allowed at special events, like for festivals and whatnot, but we haven't allowed them just, like this would open it up.
We did also allow them at the B2 and the B4, I mean, that's where they're allowed, but they're allowed to be there in two-week increments for a maximum of four weeks. It's a very restrictive ordinance.
Yeah, and limited timeframe as well, so.
It is. If I can, Mr. Mayor, I think something that would be helpful, maybe for council to consider if we're going to wait a couple of weeks to initiate this conversation, is when this conversation about the food truck ordinance kicked off in late 2021, city council asked Planning Commission to review and propose amendments to the ordinance. At that time, the direction given to the Planning Commission was really quite broad. The Planning Commission spent six-plus months studying and reviewing and proposing changes to the ordinance. So, over the next couple of weeks, while city council's reviewing and seeking input on the proposed ordinance, if this isn't in a form that is comfortable for the city council to move forward, I know for the Planning Commission, it would be really helpful to get additional guidance or specific feedback if city council isn't satisfied with this current ordinance.
Agreed, yeah. Thanks for reminding people. So that's what we're looking for. So if it's a number issue, there's, I think there's a lot of things we need to flesh out before this goes. So, this, if that's reasonable, we've got a motion and second to table it. Next meeting, reasonable?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose no. All right, we'll table it at the next meeting. All right, let's roll on. And, all right, city council will be asked to consider the approval of the following traffic control orders. Let's do, well, let's just do them both. TCO 22-002, which is an order to restrict parking on the east side of Kentucky Avenue from Harborview Drive to Preserve Drive. Why don't we do that one first, and then we'll take the second one?
All right, I make a motion to approve traffic control order 22-002.
Second.
Motion and second to approve TCO 22-002, and Bill's up here. So Bill, I think this one's pretty straight ahead, but talk to us.
Thank you, Your Honor, City Council. As the staff report says, back in May of 2021, we were approached, actually, by the North Haven Village condos about congestion that they've been experiencing on Kentucky. So we did, at that time, based on the feedback received, which was a petition to restrict the traffic. So we implemented a temporary TCO to install some signs. Immediately upon doing so, we did receive some feedback from additional members of the association that wanted the signs removed. So during a phone conversation we had with them, we did ask for them to either get us something in writing with either support or non-support of it. So, as city council could see in the letter dated, actually, in July 24 of 2022, that the association supports, actually, keeping the traffic control order as is. So, in front of city council, it's a temporary that we would like to make permanent.
Okay, that makes sense. Any questions?
Can I ask just what the issue is? There's people from the Preserve over there, parking on the east side.
Yeah, there was boat, a lot of boat trailer traffic, Steve. That's what I was informed of.
Anything else? Nothing. All right, how about public questions or comments on this one? None of the neighbors are here, so they must be happy with the change. So, seeing none, we've got a motion and a second to approve TCO 22-002. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose no. It's approved. Next, TCO 22-006, which is an order to allow a parking spot in the Quaker Street parking lot to be designated for loading and unloading during the hours of 7:00 a.m. until 5:00 p.m.
I make a motion to approve traffic control order 22-006.
Second.
All right, we've got a motion, we've got a second. Bill, one more time.
Thank you, Your Honor, City Council. This TCO was to accommodate as a loading zone for people to come in for 30 minutes and to unload, actually, for restaurants and what have you, for that time period, unload and leave. We did thought it was necessary to actually keep it between those time periods, because then after that, it's just open to the public. So, we've had this implemented most of the summer, and we haven't received any kind of negative feedback on it, so in front of city councils to make this permanent.
Okay, sounds good, thank you. Are there any public questions on this, what we're talking about? No. Council, everyone seeing where it's at? So, and it's been working so far, all right, so, good. All right, we've got a motion and a second to approve TCO 22-006. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose no. Oh, Bill, you can't go anywhere. You're here for the rest of the meeting, looks like, all right. So next, city council be asked to authorize the city staff to communicate out the council's and our whole city's support of MDOT conducting a traffic study at the intersection of Phoenix Street and Blue Star Highway, and a speed study to be undertaken along the Phoenix Corridor. So I'll just seek a motion to...
I'll make a motion to authorize city staff to communicate out council support of MDOT conducting a traffic study at the intersection of Phoenix Street and Blue Star Highway, and a speed study to be undertaken along the Phoenix Corridor. I have a second.
Motion and a second. Bill? I know we've done this before. This is officially, officially now?
This is actually, well, since I've been working with the, in the city of South Haven, many meetings I've had with MDOT, it's always been communicated to them that we would like to see some kind of study, but there's never been anything that I could find that was official meeting minutes, anything. So I thought it was necessary to actually come city council and get the authorized staff, and then, of course, anything, any communication I'm going to have, I'll bring back to city council, so. But I just wanted to, so I've never could find anything, I thought I'd bring this in front of city council. Now, there's two parts to this. One is a speed study for the corridor, and the other one is actually a traffic study of the intersection itself. I do anticipate, like anything else, when I do communicate to them with city council, I just want to manage expectations, they're going to come back and go, well, the city needs to, I just want to prepare that, and, but maybe I'll be pleasantly surprised that they won't, but if they do, of course, I'll bring back to city council. I also wanted to include, actually, some crash data that I left, you'll see it, actually, in the exhibit over to the side. There has been 31 crashes in the last 10 years resulting in left turn at this intersection, and out of, and then a total, actually, let's see, 31 crashes, left turn instances, I've included 10 years. So there's been 10, of the 10 years accidents at this intersection, there's been 121 crashes, 93.6% resulted in zero injuries and zero fatalities. So, again, with traffic studies like this, this is one thing they take into account, but it's not everything. They're going to actually do a level of service. They're going to measure existing points of turns, so this is just one of the factors that they're going to use. The speed study, I just want to make sure we're very clear, we're going to be asking them to conduct a speed study. Now, remember the speed study that we did on baseline, it'll be the similar one that's done. MDOT's very strict to go by the 85th percentile, so I like to say beware what you wish for, because they're just going to come back and say, oh, we found this, this is what we're doing.
Yeah.
And that's just, so, but it could come back, maybe it's lower, I'm not sure, but I just want city council to be aware of that, because we're not the road authority, we're asking on behalf of the citizens. And this letter is just to seek city council's support for staff to communicate forward these items.
And why are you doing, can you explain who owns the intersection? Because people often say, why don't we just fix it?
Oh, it's MDOT. MDOT, it's, MDOT's, MDOT owns the lights, MDOT owns the whole intersection. Outside of the intersection right-of-way itself to the north and the south, Blue Star, that's the Bryan County Road Commission. So the city is, we're, we don't have a horse in this race, so to speak. But we do have citizens that utilize it, and we get their feedback. So, again, this goes back to, I couldn't find anything in the minutes that we ever expressed it. I do, every meeting I've ever had with MDOT since I've been here, I've always communicated, and I've been on discussions about it, but like I said, there's never been a communication. This is just to make it official and proceed and get MDOT's feedback on her requests.
That's good.
Who decided the left turn light at the Meyer intersection?
That would probably be, they would probably have been required, actually, to do a study. MDOT would have required a traffic impact study on that, to do that. That usually happens.
So if Myers is busy enough.
What's that?
Can we relate that into this request somehow, that if Myers is busy enough to get a left turn?
Oh, I see what you mean.
Light, why can't we have one at the busy intersects that's busier than the Myers intersection?
I can do that, if that's, that's what city council would wish me to do.
I'm all for the left turn light. I think it's necessary. I've sat through a couple of lights myself this summer. I'm just concerned about when they do this study, what time of year.
Well, they're going to have to do, whatever they're going to do, the study, it's going to have to be at the highest impact, that's what they're going to do it at. So, the communication, we're going to start, the end process before anything is probably implemented, could be a year and a half at Fast Track. We're going to be a probable year, they're going to wait to do any kind of study in the peak of the summer. They can't simulate that on a program, so they come in the peak of the summer, and they take those turning movements and traffic counts for the corridor and those intersections, and then they put them in what they call as a program that do simulations. But they have to do the physical counts and put it in there to get the right, so to answer your question, yeah.
Can you ask them to look at the old Meyer data to see if that's relevant, to get one at Blue Star?
Well, they could, but like, like any engineer, they would say, well, it's not up to date, and they wouldn't want to hold to it, they're going to ask for updated ones. I see what you mean, and we went through a discussion like that, just similar with the DDA with a traffic study, and the engineer said no, but I see what you mean, it's, like it would be pretty recent data.
And the reason for the speed study is?
Feedback we've received, actually, from citizens and users of the corridor, that the corridor is too fast, hard, difficult for people to pull out of certain driveways and stuff, so that would be the reasoning for the speed study.
And while they're here, they can just look at it, because it's a mess, it's falling apart, so it'd be good. It's rutted. Any other questions of this group, and then if not, any public questions or comments?
I don't have a question, but I was just going to say, I would probably be in the minority here, but I feel like potentially a roundabout there would be nice.
All right, anybody else? No public? Public loves the intersection, they don't want us to do a thing to it. I'm kidding, we want it looked at. All right, we've got a motion and a second to authorize staff to communicate our concerns to MDOT. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose no. Ask away. And next, city council be asked to take the following actions regarding the 12th Avenue Substation Distribution, and I will just read these all off, and then we'll take them as a group. First, we're going to consider the approval of the purchase of line reclosure from U and I Products for $28,942. After that, we'll be asked to consider the approval of the purchase of underground cable from Power Line Supply for the amount of $510,804. And then finally, considering the approval of the purchase of two 5,695-foot reels of overhead conductor from Erby for the amount of $18,393.71.
I make a motion to approve the purchases as just outlined.
Second.
All right, we've got a motion, we've got a second. If it's got a big ticket, Mr. Hunter's got to be in the house to tell us about it. Good evening.
These are the, we have everything purchased so far for the substation, all the material, we have a contractor under, this is for the distribution system that's going to be part of it, that's going to be, the substation's going to feed into. So those are upgrades involved, actually, because of the size of the line and the voltage going through there, they needed to be upgraded. There are more things that are going to be coming in front of city council, as stated in the pad mount junctions, splicing vaults, 15 KV elbows, fiberglass crossarms, insulators, and overhead line material. So there'll be more things coming to city council for approval. We are utilizing, we typically, actually, have always purchased these to our dedicated supplier that we have, Power Line Supply, but with the complexity of this, we've been going out and getting bids, so all these were bidded out. Power Line Supply is our regular distributor, and they did get the underground cable, but the other ones, we're trying to get the best that we can. We're also, GMB is actually, not GRP, my apologies, GRP, we're utilizing all the material we have in the back as well from other projects, so we're trying to save as much money as possible on this project, and I think GRP's been doing a great job utilizing and getting the prices that we have so far to date.
Okay. Questions? Go ahead, George.
Bill, have we gotten all our information that we needed from AEP on this substation, so that we know that what we're specing out is going to work for them, as well as for us?
Yes, actually, we finally did get the facilities agreement signed, so yes, we have, and I have, that was actually signed finalized, it was like last week, so that took quite some due, but yes, they are, we're trying to put some pressure on AEP to start this sooner, because they do, AEP does want to do an upgrade, actually, for the Hartford Line going to the main sub, and we're trying to push them to do this first, the feed to this, because we really don't want to go down to one substation during that. I don't know if we physically can, so we're putting some pressure on them, but yes, they are aware, and the final facility agreement was signed just as last week.
All right, thank you.
Anybody else up here? And if not, are there any public questions on this? Just to make sure your lights stay on, turn on properly. All right, seeing none. I've got a motion, I've got a second to approve the purchases as just discussed. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose no. It's approved. And finally, city council be asked to receive an update from our Public Works Director, Bill Hunter, who just happens to be here.
Thank you, Your Honor, City Council. Just an update for the projects going on within the city, DPW-wise. We have the new substation project, we just went over the distribution, but the substation's ready to be, it's ready to go, we have all the materials signed, we just have one easement we're waiting for. It's a very critical easement, we could save a lot of money. However, we plan for the worst case, as always, and if the easement doesn't get signed, we do have the funds budgeted to go around, so we're hoping to save some money, so. And we have one Eagle permit, which is just a wetland delineation, we already have the wetlands lined out, and there's something with their computer system trying to download, it's just been a challenge. The AMI project, we have more and more meters coming in, it looks like we're on track to get this changed out in the spring of next year. The Aleworth non-motorized path, we did go out for bids to the MDOT system, it came back about 40% higher, so we're rebidding it this fall, and look like when the bids come back, hopefully they'll get a little better, and then we'll have a spring construction. So initially, that was supposed to be the fall of this year, but 40% higher, I thought, actually, it's, we could still do it in this fiscal year, rebid it, and hopefully we can save some money, but we only had one bid or two. The air handling unit for City Hall here, the air handling units had been kicked out a little further back, we should be getting them in December of this year. Kids Corner Phase Two, we do have an open house scheduled, I believe the 14th, right here in council chambers. Right now, we are on, we're on track, and we'll just keep pushing forward. Pier and railing gate, we're still waiting on an agreement with the Army Corps of Engineers. We also have another agreement we're waiting on as well for the light frings. Street resurfacing, which is happening right now, that is still underway, it's going along well, we've done some curb work and road work on some of these streets that are listed in the staff report. We're starting to design for street resurfacing spring of 2023, and those roads include Lee Street from LaGrange to Cherry Street, Florence Street from Green Street to Lee Street, Sunset Drive from LaGrange to Elm Place, Broadway Street from Elm Place to Phillips Street, Elm Place from Sunset Drive to LaGrange Street, and then Wells from Parks Avenue to Black River Street, and then North Street from Park Avenue to Black River Street, and that should be in the early, that'll be bid this early winter and then the spring of 2023. Still working on a covert flushing rate, Shoss of Water Service. Uh, still working on a covert flushing rate. Um, Shosa Water Services will be, uh, we have, Compton is under contract at this time. They're doing the, the water services in all those streets that were resurfacing and then they're going further. So that's been going along well. And, uh, Shosa, uh, wastewater treatment plant, project plan. Um, a, a good update on that is we just were informed through the Clean Water State Revolving Fund that we should be receiving, um, our plan was 7.2 million and the state, uh, wants to give us 3.64 million for the project. So that's about 50 cents on the dollar and, and that's good. Um, we will have, uh, there is one obstacle we have to do. It's a public, uh, hearing that they have, but our score wise, where we sit, and, um, I don't think it's going to affect us at all. So that's a good way of leveraging those dollars coming in and, um, we'll just keep pressing forward.
That's great news.
The city council have any question on anything I just went over?
Questions? Anybody? Go ahead, Joe.
Um, Bill, this is not really a question, but I want to compliment you and your department. So I just thought it's the right time to do it. Um, we have a senior, uh, resident, 91 years old, that lives on Monroe Boulevard by herself. Um, her only exercise is to walk about two blocks in front of her home. She fell flat on her face. The curb was sticking up. She fell. Another neighbor helped her get up, took her to the hospital. She's okay. The nice part of the story is the resident called you, um, a neighbor called you. Within minutes, you came out personally. You looked at the sidewalks, said, yep, it's going to be fixed. Not only did you do that or your workers, but they spray painted all the sidewalks along that whole section for about three blocks from Monroe Boulevard. Cause I walked and looked at all the little circles and you're starting to repave them. So I just want to compliment you. To hear someone got hurt and within, literally within minutes, you were out there yourself. And now you have your work, workers tearing up the sidewalk, putting new ones in. Um, the neighbors around there are very grateful. So I wanted to compliment your department.
Thank you. I'll pass that on to staff. Thank you very much.
Hey, Bill, you were talking about the pier, uh, still the pier gate needing some, uh, Army Corps of Engineer approval. And then you were talking about liferings. Don't we already have liferings at the pier or is?
We, we do actually, and that, that agreement actually expired, expired. So I'm going through the same actually renewal process on both. And I just thought I'd mention it every time and it's the same lengthy. I mean, we have existing ones. It seemed like it would be a little expedited process, but it doesn't seem that way.
All right. I understand. Thank you.
Anybody else? I'll just jump in. So I'm, I'm sad about the non-motorized path. I've only been asking for, you know, two or three decades. Um, but we're going to get it. I, I just, I just remind people that we used to, it used to be, we didn't have sidewalks all the way down Monroe Boulevard. And in addition to the improvements Joe was talking about, but now it extends out and it is amazing to me, the number of people that walk that. There's, there are now walking that didn't used to walk that are just, I mean, I have some neighbors that see it all the time. It's amazing to see the sheer volume of people walking. And I'm pretty convinced that Aleworth section will really connect the first ward into, you know, the hospital and everything else that's going, I mean, just into town. So I know. I'll wait for the next section. And we, we already have an ask in for the next ones too, right? Cause that's section one. We'll have to, I guess.
I think we've been alternating. I think our, our next request was actually veterans on the other side. So we've been alternating the two were our high priorities.
Yeah.
Cause we wanted to make that also that connection up to the college. I think that was our next one.
Yeah.
I think we're still prioritizing. I think our plan was to, um, after the ones done on veterans is to go back to Aleworth and, and phase that one out. I believe there's three phases on Aleworth we have because it's such a long stretch without any, um, pavement for walking. So.
Yeah. It'd be nice to get that done because there's a lot of activity in the Aleworth side, a lot of residents over there, not as many residents out. But the only other thing was I was reading an article about there's good milkweed and bad milkweed. You know, we talked about the milkweed and the butterflies. So now I'm going to have, I, I couldn't get a good definitive like picture of the good milkweed. So now I'm curious because I've got it in my yard. Just saying. I don't know if you, I'll, I'll call Erin and see if you can help me out. Our, Arbor, see if you can show me what the good or the bad is. So, or anybody knows, call us. I want to, I want to see what bad is. So that's your trivia for the day. All right. Next. Citizens in the audience will be heard on items not on the agenda. So if you'd like to come up and ask a question or tell me what's good milkweed and bad milkweed, come on up.
Can't believe you don't know.
I thought you all looked the same.
I was letting someone else come first. Um, Mike Campbell, 216 Erie Street. Three topics to the extent I have, uh, the time. Uh, the first one is to just give a final report on my walking project and the reporting of parking infractions, uh, within the area of, uh, Ward One and the southern part of Ward Three. As you know, I walk every day and it's a, it's a rectangle, an odd rectangle, Monroe Boulevard, South Haven Street, Kalamazoo, and then Eagle. And I walk all the east west streets as well. And as I reported, I think in early June, I was tracking, uh, infractions of parking across the public walk. Given that that area of town is heavily trafficked by visitors going to the beach and so forth. So I started the, I started it on the Friday before Memorial Day and ended it yesterday. Um, and when I reported in June, I had said I had already seen a difference based on the enforcement from the South Haven Police Department. Uh, it continued throughout the summer. Um, there was a little uptick over the last holiday weekend. But again, I want to thank South Haven Police Department. So just some facts since, um, we want to have data. I reported over the course of those times, out of the 101 days, um, 34 days. So once every three days I needed to report something. There were 32 properties overall that were reported in that area. Uh, and there were 68 infractions reported, again, all for parking across the public walk. Mind you, I didn't walk every day because I haven't been here every day, uh, during those 101. So I was missing some of those days. And also, um, I took probably a dozen to a dozen and a half times of actually talking with people in the homes where the infractions were occurring that I'm not talking about here, where I actually talked to them and said, did you know? And they were very, um, open to moving their vehicle. So those are not counted, but there were 68 infractions reported. I said at the time, uh, when I spoke earlier that I was not going to be biased. And in fact, 28% of the infractions or of the residences, uh, were non-STR addresses. Uh, 72% were STR addresses in that, in that area. The STRs while making up 72% of the addresses actually counted for over 80% of the infractions. So about two thirds of the properties who are registered as STRs are actually managed by local management companies. Um, and they, they accounted for about 80%, eight out of 10 of the infractions that were occurring. I'm not going to name names or anything of that sort. Um, I do recall one of the management companies speaking on more than one occasion about how carefully they enforce the rules and so forth. I simply would ask those management companies to maybe take an extra minute and tell the residents about this parking violation as well because there are quite a few infractions. I will leave the record with, with Kate so she can see the, see the items and, uh, these can be verified with the South Haven Police Department. The second, um, item is about 354 Kalamazoo. Again, in June I had, uh, brought up the fact that I had noticed that and, uh, that particular address had been remodeled without building permits. Uh, yet it was later certified to be, uh, an STR. And I know Mr. Arnold had taken, uh, interest in that and wanted more information. He's, he's missing tonight. So I'm just curious if there was ever any follow-up on that to determine if there was anything wrong and if the, uh, house is actually safe to be an STR. The final topic is about the economic impact study that I know the city council wants to, uh, conduct and that city staff is looking for a vendor. I have three, uh, three comments on that to address three issues I think we have. I would like to see that project be led by some city council members. I know there have been people that have talked about leadership at the city council level. I think if you were to put some city council members in charge of that study, it would not only show leadership, but it would also be a way for them to become intimate with the data. Add residents to the committee as well. Have them be voting residents who are representative of the stakeholders. This will make a divisive group of people actually work together. And then finally, uh, let the staff not work on it because they're busy doing other things. Thank you.
Thanks for your confidence. And then Kate, can you just get back with him on that property on Kalamazoo?
Will do.
Thank you. Should get back on that property question. Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. Mary Hasley, 726 Norshire Drive. I'm here about ordinances, at least one item. And the staff alleges frequently that things are not clear. And it seems like I find clarity when they do not. And then I hear about their creative solutions, which I disagree with. Like having to get an erosion permit when they said it was landscaping or possibly part of demolition when demolition was completed several months ago. Creativity unfortunately is not uniformly applied either. So it makes it more offensive. If people have concerns, they raise them to staff. The typical answer is we'll look into it. We never hear back as, as exemplified just before me. And we just are left. It's like a black hole at times, unfortunately. And maybe staff is overburdened, which I can appreciate, but it seems like they go to the nth degree for some people. For example, before the ZBA in August, there was an application for an interpretation and it was incomplete. At least two questions were left unanswered. The application was accepted as completed and there was an extensive staff report. And to the best of my knowledge, no additional fee was charged. Other people ask for interpretations that may shine light of poor decisions by staff. And golly gee, the staff usurps the ZBA's right that is supposed to be the one to identify whether something should or should not go to ZBA. And they then, if they cannot do that, they assess fees that make it difficult for an average resident to come forward. I just see a difference in application of the law that is clearly written. And it's not fair. It needs to be addressed and we should all have access to the ZBA for the same reasons under, under the same standards. And that's not happening. And it seems like the ones that are being, are, that are having the highest turtles are the ones that would shed light on bad decisions that continue. For example, with decisions on STRs. I know the staff and city council have received many emails about issues, errors, and we're waiting to find out what happens. We are in the process of providing a table that may make it easier, but it, there, there is clarity in these ordinances. And I'm concerned that lack of clarity is alleged to misconstrue, not to take the plain language of the ordinance and apply it as written. And that brings us to my other point again with ordinances. And I'm just going to voice my concern again that I have voiced when you appointed the committee for the recodification. I mean, the members on this committee for recodification are the same members that were involved in drafting the environmental impact statement, the fire pat, fire pit ordinance, both of which have been sent back to the planning commission, one by the city council, one by city staff by themselves, because gosh, they didn't anticipate unintended consequences. How can we put this important recodification in the laps of the people who could not anticipate unintended consequences and require redrafting of at least two ordinances in less than one year of unanimous approval, first recommendation by planning commission and then approval by city council? We need some objectivity as was just expressed previously. We need to encourage asking the hard questions, demanding answers to the hard questions and not, for lack of better description, hiding your head in the sand when you're concerned that you don't like the answer or you don't have the ability or the courage to say, I don't know, let me find out. And until I find out, we will put this on hold. And that is exactly where we're at with the food truck ordinances. The DDA asked a lot of questions. City staff could answer none of them. I think that we need more involvement of key stakeholders at an early time. And we need staff to admit when they either do not know or admit the bad answer is going to frustrate where they want to go. We need objectivity and clarity and I look forward to the city council doing that.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Was there anybody else? Amanda, you come, come on up. Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Amanda Sukka. And I know that we've had a lot of issues this past summer, talking about all the STRs and all that kind of stuff. And, and I have always tried to find opportunity where there's issues. Um, and I believe we do have an opportunity here that we're, that we may not be missing. I don't know that we're not missing it. So I'm going to bring it up.
And did you give your address, Amanda?
Uh, 1970 68th Street.
Thank you.
It's been, I think everybody believes that we need more full-time people, more full-time residents. Um, I don't disagree with that. And, but I, I don't believe that, um, eliminating certain industries is going to help create more full-time residents. It's also been said that we need jobs, we need more jobs to have more full-time residents. And I believe that would work too, but that's kind of a hard thing to get to. Seems like that's an impossible thing to get to. I have, I'm a proud realtor in South Haven and, um, one thing that I have noticed is an uptick of people buying to work here. So, I mean, buying to work at home. So they're living here full-time, working at home. And when they come in and they're looking at, at a place that they want to live, to work there, to bring their jobs there. They, I have had companies send these big forms of all kinds of things they need to fill out and it's all telecommunication. It's all internet issues. And they have to be approved before they can move to that town. So, and they, they just use the, the term teleworking. This is not a new idea. Of course, we all know that a lot of people are working from home and will continue to since the pandemic. We have, um, areas called technology hubs, Zoom towns, fiber communities, which I don't really like that one. Sounds like there's a digestive issue or something. Smart towns, tech cities. Um, all these phrases are being used and it doesn't take very long on, and a few Googles to figure out what these places are doing. A lot of these places do not have the quality of life we have and they are really pulling people in because of their technology. When we start talking about what exactly we need in technology, I don't know that. And that's the reason I'm here. Because that's not my expertise, far from it. But I believe that we have adequate people in the area or know where we can get the, the information that we need to be able to create that. And I believe that, um, I've, I've got one statistic here. People relocated to towns where they can work from home. It's increased 17% since the pandemic. So we hear on the news that a lot of people are going back to work. A lot of companies, um, are making them come back to work. A lot of people are preferring to go back to work, but there's still a 17% increase. And for a small town, that, that's, that's big. That's big. People are offering incentives. Their, one town is make my move. Um, they're, they're doing incentives like offering, um, reduction on taxes, all kinds of stuff to get people to move there at full time. Um, Lancaster, Pennsylvania, of all places, has been one of the best places for a tech town. Um, and they actually started before the pandemic. Shoot, I'm not finished. Okay. When we're looking at, okay, I didn't time this out very well, did I? We have moved to Michigan incentive. It's $15,000 for people to move to, to Michigan. It's $15,000 for people to move to Michigan. I don't think it's been utilized in this area. I think we need to look into that a little bit more. But what what else do we need? Could we have much less better internet, of course, but could we have some type of office space, recording studios, actual Zoom studios where people could work? What kind of things do they need to come move here and work here? There are several research studies that I have been able to find pretty easily. 65% of the people who work from home have college degrees or better. We have, the difference, I'll wrap it up. The difference is we have here a quality of life that other towns don't have. So it's not a hard sell. So I think this is something you and I both could hang our hats on and possibly commit to.
Thanks for your comments. You can email to us, too. So.
Could I comment in support?
Of course.
Because if I wait to the end, I'll have lost some of the thrust. You and I have sat down together even four and a half years ago when short-term rentals were a difficult issue. And I got to tell you, I, my thinking on this has changed a bit, and I've learned a lot. But you have always tried to look for solutions, and I appreciate it. And I couldn't agree with you more that there's a lot of people working out of their homes. So let me give you a real-life example. Today, I had a drive to Kalamazoo. I had to take my wife at 7:00 AM to Kalamazoo to get her in front of a computer because she can teach remotely at Western, but she couldn't do it from South Haven. And I called you, Kate, about something else, and I just told you how upset I was. An hour and 20 minutes with the internet provider, and I have not had internet in my home since last Friday a week ago. That's how long, you know what they told me they're going to fix it? September 27th at 1:00 in the afternoon. So we can't work at home at all anymore. This is killing us. And I'm semi-retired, and I love working. I can't work out of my house here in South Haven, nor can my wife work out of here.
But these people are bringing the kids. I mean, these are the kids that are going to school here, and these are middle-income, high, upper-middle-income jobs that we don't have here. I mean, imagine the people walking in, bringing their jobs with them.
Exactly. Well, I don't have a company here. I am the company, and I work on them. So that's what we're trying to bring. And cities, all the little cities around the country, especially New England, you hear people buying homes sight unseen. They can live and work anywhere, but they can't come here because part of the problem is the internet. Now, I don't want to bring up a negative, but you know the second part of the problem is housing. I'll just leave it that. Unless we start to have more of a housing supply, we're going to still run into the problem, which I was leaving to the end, the only reason I brought up.
Why don't you hold it to the end?
This is the Kalamazoo paper. The Kalamazoo has taken a position. They're going to go out and build 7,800 new homes for people so they have enough stock of homes. And one of the things they are using is the Upjohns study, not ours today, but Upjohns did a study for them to tell them how to do it. They pay an organization to come in and give a presentation on the Upjohns study. We have an Upjohns study. We've had it for over a year and a half. We don't want to talk about it here at city council. And when I asked Kate, "Let's have that presentation," she said, "Well, Upjohns won't come out and do it." Upjohns not doing this presentation. They hired an independent company. I'm only saying, if you are sincere, that that the owners of the real estate companies, that the shops, that the people that are residents, if we all can come together, part of coming together is knowing the facts, so why don't we get the Upjohns study presented either by Jim Hedinger, who we pay to be our economic development manager, or somebody to give a presentation? But I agree with you.
Thanks, Amanda. Appreciate it.
We can bring a lot of people in here that we're not.
Anybody else with public comment? Because this is the public comment time. So anybody else? I think I saw.
Wilkins, 811 Indiana Street. I just want to start. To me, and I don't get it, I don't get emotional too fast, but tonight, the emails that I've gotten and listening to the council is really brings everything back home full cycle. And I really don't know where to go with this. Feels as if we got a city, a council, neighbors that don't care for one another. It's just a lack of love everywhere. It's ironic, we start a meeting, we pray to God for Him to, for God to give us guidance and protection and provision in our lives and business, in our businesses, and then direct the city. And yet, time after time, we fail to consider the direction that God has given us in His Word. For instance, "Thou shall love thy Lord, thy God, with all thy heart and with all thy soul and with all thy mind and with all thy strength." This is the first commandment. The second is like Him, namely, that thou shall love thy neighbor as thyself. There is none other commandment greater than these. I think every one of us would agree on tonight that love is colorblind. Love is, true love I'm talking, is colorblind. True love doesn't hurt. True love is kind, and true love wants the best for everybody. I'm talking tonight in terms, from the perspective of a leader, a pastor in this area, that have, don't have any other words that I can share to misplaced people in this community that see the lack of love. There's no concern for the neighbors. You see what's going on in the black community. Our numbers are dropping. You see what STRs, no one is talking about eliminating STRs. But you see what it's doing to our neighborhood. Ward 1 is becoming a playground for STRs, these big mammoth homes being built. And yet, time after time, as a leader, I'm hearing the sad stories of people, "Reverend, can you help me find a home? Reverend, can you find a place where I can rent?" The only thing that gives me comfort tonight is knowing that every one of us, you, 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 and you, and you, will stand before God and have to give an account of what we did to make life better for others, what we did to make life better for our neighbors. It is sad what's going on, lack of love. I hear these sad stories all the time. And on top of that, trying to encourage our young people that are dealing with mental And yet, we have more concern about whether or not we should listen to a food truck package ordinance. You had a lot of concern about hearing other folks. You had a lot of concern about food trucks not hurting the businesses. Where is that same love shown towards the person that's sitting out on the street corner that can't find a home to stay here? People that look like me, why is it so hard for you all to love people that look like me? Because people that look like me, they're being forced out of this city. Why is it so hard for you to love me? Love me with the type of love that would want the best for me.
Thanks for your comments. And I will just say, we are always looking at housing. So that's, it's ongoing. So anybody else? All right. That takes us to city manager comments. Good evening, Kate.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Council. Many of you may know or have seen that the dredging work has begun in the harbor. That'll be operated by the Corps of Engineers through King Company, that is their contractor. So that has begun. In the next couple of weeks, starting mid-September, you're starting to see the closing of some of our seasonal facilities, and they're all extended to October, November. So the downslope has begun. I did want to let council know that at the schools' request, we have installed new crosswalk signs that are light up at Baseline Road for those facilities over there. I did also want to remind city council that we have our DEI first kickoff meeting at 5:30 at the first meeting in October, so plan to be early on that one. That was moved from our, I think, our September meeting. So just make sure that's on your calendars, and we'll send out a meeting request as well. Tax bills are due September 19th, and the Kids' Corner Open House that Bill mentioned will be next Wednesday from 6:00 to 7:30. Please come out, come on into that open house, give your thoughts. Those are my comments.
Thanks, Kate. Questions for Kate? Nothing? All right, council comments. Let's roll to the right.
The only the only comment I have is, I would like to suggest at some point, we have what Steve had suggested, is a workshop. And if that's not the right word, some kind of a discussion where this, which is Article 10 Short-Term Rentals, is discussed in detail. I think a lot of the questions and concerns that residents, we get every two weeks, come up and say, "They don't understand this. How is this happening? Mary said it tonight." There's questions that either we're not getting here, we don't see it, we don't understand it, or it's, there's ambiguity around it, and we need clarification. Until we get clarification of exactly what is in a short-term rental, we're not going to be able to look people in the eye when they stand up at the podium and give them a straight answer. Because I read it, and I have a couple pages of questions that I can interpret different ways. So I do think we need some point, complete understanding, and maybe discussion, a presentation or an open discussion, a workshop, whatever you want to call it, so we can discuss what is in the short-term rentals and what possibly could be misinterpreted and what could be changed. But we've got to discuss this because it is a dividing point in the city, and I think a lot of it's just misunderstandings.
Thanks. Good. Thank you.
No comments?
I would just say that I agree with Joe. I'd like to see a workshop on that to get some clarification, and also would love a presentation on the Upjohns study if we were able to do that, so we can keep moving forward and finding good housing solutions for people and economic diversity and all that good stuff that we need. So that's it. Thank you.
That would be for a workshop on short-term rentals, as well, as I've said before. But I've also stated, and probably been misunderstood, for myself to be able to make a decision and vote, I want to wait till the economic impact study is done, so that maybe I can take the information from a workshop that we've gathered with the input, put it together with the economic impact study. As far as the Upjohns study goes, I've looked at that, and certain things can be interpreted different ways, and I'm hoping this next study can be more detail-oriented to the economics. That's all I have.
Okay, thanks.
No comment.
All right. Couple things. So, yeah, on the Upjohns study, I, let's, we could, why don't we just have the discussion? We've been through it. I mean, I guess I've been through it. We all have had the opportunity to ask questions about it. So I guess to review it, I mean, some of the things have happened, some of the things have not, you know what I mean? So it's, anyway, maybe just, we'll add it as an agenda item, and we can have that discussion, that we can just talk about it. Again, happy to do that. I think, we're talking about two different workshops. Our workshop, we talked about holding publicly in regards to kind of STRs going forward, separate from maybe some of the, I think, more recent questions that Mary's talking about. I think that with some of the emails, as far as just interpretation questions, and I think, kind of, I've been messaging back and forth through the staff to say, "Can we at least kind of agree on how we're arriving and what we're arriving at so we all understand?" So that's maybe what you're asking about more specifically. So maybe two different discussions, so we can maybe flesh that out. Amanda, thank you for your comments. I just wanted to, specifically, I didn't get to answer you, sorry, because we rushed you off to sit down there. But we do have that strategy, kind of the work-from-anywhereers or kind of depending on them. Mark of Amburin's been helping us, and we've talked about that, you know, the strategy, and, you know, they're helping promote it. Jim Hedinger's brought that up. So the concept, I actually have two people on my street alone that have just, they decided to switch from just vacationing or, you know, seasonal rental to full-time because they're working from home now. That's two on my street, which is kind of cool. So I know there's more, as you said. So that's kind of a nice trend, so we should always continue to be, and I'll double-check with Lee, we can back with Mark of Amburin and see where we're at in that strategy. But we always want to be looking to attract. I say it lots and lots and lots. Good schools, things to do, the internet, the market. I mean, there are a lot of different, you know, it's kind of the overall strategy to attract people. Just getting rid of something is not going to attract people. We should always be thinking of attracting people. We like trails, we like sidewalks, all that good stuff goes together. So good ideas. Thank you for, as always, bringing good ideas. We appreciate that. Just driving by, it's fun to see the change at the high school. I haven't driven by there, the fencing's up. The tennis courts are purple today. Kind of cool. You drive by, the tennis courts have a new color to them. We had some pickleballers out there trying to use them without any markings over the weekend. It was kind of funny to see some people out there. I was like, oh, hopefully they were, but they're getting closer. And then, other than that, just a lot of good feedback on the holiday from business owners over the weekend, that several of them said it volume like the Fourth of July, which is kind of encouraging, despite a super warm, very hot day for a Michigan football game, I'm just telling you, on Saturday, and then fall came the next two days. So it was a good holiday, so I'm glad everybody made it through it. So on that note, I'm glad the teachers are back, too. So, Ms. LaTisha, good start to school this week?
That was last week.
What, a good week this week, too?
Yeah, it's Tuesday.
All right. All right. So, and on that, thanks for the comments tonight. I look forward to talking about the food trucks in a couple of weeks. So I'll get the shop owners down here to talk. So on that, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Take a motion to adjourn.
Second?
Motion second to adjourn. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned, thanks.